I'll jump in now. So we are broadcasting, so we will go ahead and call this meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Bertrand.
Here.
Councilmember Botor.
Here.
Councilmember Story.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brooks.
Here.
Mayor Peterson.
Here, thank you. Um, I, let's go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance and then I'll turn it over to our city clerk to speak about how to participate in this remote meeting. So I will go ahead and request that one of our council members lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, Councilmember Story, would you mind leading us this evening?
Let's get, add the last term.
Oh, good point. I apologize.
I thought that'd be a good one.
I, I think that's a good choice.
All right.
Yeah, take it away.
I, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And this is a republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Botor. Uh, I'm going to turn it over now to our city clerk to provide some information about how to participate in this meeting remotely.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson. Hello and welcome to the Capitola City Council Meeting. Thank you for joining us on a Tuesday this week. In accordance with the current Santa Cruz County Health Order and the Governor's Executive Order N 2920, this meeting is not physically open to the public. Council and staff are meeting via Zoom, and there are several ways for the public to wa-watch and participate. Information on how to join the meeting over Zoom or with your phone is available on our website, cityofcapitola.org, on the slides now shown, and on the published meeting agenda. Thank you for attending this Capitola City Council Meeting. Mayor Peterson, uh, back to you.
Thank you. Uh, I'll now ask for a report on closed session.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Closed session was held on the items on the agenda and direction was given to staff.
Thank you. Uh, are there any additional materials for tonight's meeting?
No, none were received.
Great, thank you. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda?
No changes to the agenda tonight?
Great, thank you. We will now move on to public comment. Now is the time for members of the public to address the council on items not on tonight's agenda. I will turn it over to our moderator to determine if there's any public comments either written or by attendees of tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson. I do not see anyone in attendance with their asking for public comment, and I do not see anything else.
All right, great, thank you. With that, we will close public comments and bring it to city council and staff comments. And we'll start with staff. Are there any comments from staff this evening?
Um, yes, I had a comment. So I just wanted to announce to the public that the City of Capitola's opening recruitment for advisory body, people that want to participate in their local government, please feel free to apply if you'd like to join one of our many boards or commissions. There's more information on our website, cityofcapitola.org. Just click on "Serve on a City Board, Commission, or Committee" underneath "Community News." Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Uh, any city council comments? If there's any city council members with comments this evening, please feel free to raise your hands uh, or, or physically raise your hand, either one. All right, seeing none, we will move along to item seven, our consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar will be enacted in one motion in the form listed on the agenda, and there's no separate discussion prior to the time the council votes unless members of the council or public request specific items to be discussed for separate review. Are there any, I will turn over to our moderator to see if there was any members of the public that requested items on our consent calendar to be removed.
Mayor Peterson, I do not see any attendees requesting, and I do not see any emails.
Great, thank you. I do see Councilmember Bertrand has his hand raised. Was there an item on consent that you were looking to have removed, Councilmember Bertrand? You're on mute still.
I was just waiting to make a motion, that's all.
Oh, okay, great. Uh, well then, if no one wants anything removed from the consent calendar, uh, Councilmember Bertrand, I'll turn it over to you for a motion.
I'd like to move the consent calendar.
A second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Bertrand and a second from Councilmember Botor. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember Bertrand.
Aye.
Councilmember Botor.
Aye.
Councilmember Story.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brooks.
Aye.
Mayor Peterson.
Hi. Passes unanimously, thank you so much. We will move on to item eight, general government and public hearings, and we'll begin with item eight A, uh, Recreation Division Strategic Plan. I'll turn it over to staff.
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor, councilmember. I'll take a minute to share my screen. All right. So the item before you this evening is the Recreation Strategic Plan. Um, now, in March, or before March, uh, before the pandemic, I brought the, um, Strategic, the Recreation Strategic Plan before council, and at that time, um, was given directions. And so this is the second presentation of the strategic plan. Um, so I'm going to walk you through a little bit of a reminder as well as some, um, some update. So in the spring of 2019, Recreation contracted with, um, Blue Point Planning in order to facilitate the strategic plan process. And through that process, um, a core team was developed that consisted of community stakeholders as well as staff, and they embarked upon a evaluation process, um, through discussion as well as by collecting community feedback, where we did surveys and held, uh, community meetings. Uh, this is what the process has existed over a six-month period. That core team, in discussion and through community feedback, identified a few, um, uh, items that were in, put into the strategic plan. And some of those areas were some inefficiencies that seemed to exist within the city that would be connected to Recreation. Uh, that core team also discussed areas of growth and success that the division currently already has. Um, and then through our public outreach, we learned what public desires from our Recreation as well as existing points of confusion that the public experiences within Recreation or what they would expect to be within Recreation. Um, through that process, through that information, through that conversation, a new mission, vision, and set of values were developed as kind of a guiding force for the strategic plan. And then four goals with corresponding strategies that would outline the work plan of the strategic plan if adopted. If this plan is approved, that work plan would go through to the conclusion of 2025. Now, per council direction, the strategic plan was presented to the Art and Cultural Commission, and the feedback has been incorporated into the plan as well as this presentation. Um, if approved, uh, or sorry, the plan may be amended over time. Um, and then, of course, the council would review any budget changes, um, or new programs that would be associated with the plan. And so launching into the four goals, I'd like to start by going through each of the goals and touching briefly on the strategies that would be, um, implemented as that work plan. So the first goal is an efficient and effective division. Um, so this, that core team had a conversation, and a lot of it was focusing on ways that the division could be more efficient and effective and incorporate aspects of the city that often the public look to. Um, Recreation as the, as the department or the division, that that would be helpful. Uh, and so some of the things that were discussed would be to provide additional operational support for city organized events. Um, we also talked about how while public works oversees parks, Recreation is often seen as the programming side of parks. And so having a strategy to incorporate programming, um, and programming of parks. There's also often a confusion about a special event permit process and, and members of the public thinking that, um, it should be the approach Recreation or this. And so exploring with the police department if that is, um, a process that we should, uh, evaluate and possibly change. Um, exploring the recreational organizational chart as well as fundraising and grants, um, and general fund parameters for being that efficient and effective division. Goal two, being affordable and accessible. Uh, so this core team had an obvious interest that, um, Recreation as a service to the city, be something that is balanced, that is interesting to the full range of community members as well as acceptable, um, both in ability and economic status. And so the strategies that were kind of outlined for this goal would be to engage in a conversation about, um, the cost recovery policy for Recreation and ensuring that there's an affordable access point. Um, that, uh, perhaps Recreation could benefit from having a committee advisory group. It was also identified that, um, there is a, as, as you are looking at the areas that we serve, that there is room for more, um, team interactions and focusing on development of team programs and, um, potentially internships as a way to, um, connect youth or older individuals to Recreation through team internships or team programs. Um, and then, in addition to that, talking about the optimization of, um, the park facilities and partner locations that we have at our disposal in order to maximize the amount of programming that we have, have available. And then, directly related to that, goal number three, um, so maximizing facilities. Um, we often, we had a decor team had a big conversation about the use of, um, the city facilities that we have at our disposal in order to ensure that there is, um, programming available and recognition that those facilities really need to be able to support that. And so some of the strategies that were incorporated into this goal would be to conduct a survey of facilities and those needs assessments. This would be done, um, with public works, as public works would still be, um, overseeing. This would be done with Public Works, as Public Works would still be overseeing parks, but we would be working on this together in order to identify how programming opportunity would be available with those surveys, with that needs assessment. And then through that, identify any facility upgrades that would provide additional opportunity. And then any recreation programs that would be associated with any new developments that would occur within the city. For example, the RISBEN project that would come hopefully in completion during this plan. And so looking at what programming opportunities might exist with that new park project. And then the fourth goal would be partnerships. We, many of the core team members that participated were actual partners that the city currently already has. We had members of the school district that were part of the core team. We had members of the library that were part of the core team. And so through that discussion, we talked about how it just kind of makes sense that we would further develop those relationships for the benefit of Recreation in the city. And so the strategies that would be implemented would be to develop an MOU with the school district that would outline some clear regarding the J.C. Community Center benefits that could go back and forth, much like our after-school programming that we're currently, and then the OST programming. To develop an MOU with the library for programming upon the completion of the library and be able to provide programming through there. And then also identify that there would be opportunity for other public and private, excuse me, private recreation as well as events and parks. For example, how we currently are in a partnership with County Parks for the OST program. As well as in partnership, pursuing grants with partners and the benefit that programs can have through that process as well. So this plan has no immediate impact. However, changes that would occur as a result of the strategic plan would be incorporated into the corresponding budget through, so through the budget process. And so my recommendation for you this evening is to adopt the proposed Recreation Strategic Plan. And with that, I am available for questions.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from council? I see that Councilmember Bertrand has his hand up.
I do, thank you, Mayor. So I do have a question for you, Nikki, in terms of what's your vision or has it been formed for the advisory council proposal? And maybe some of the discussion that came through the work group may be guiding your answer, I suppose.
Okay, so if I understand your question, you're wanting to know what my vision would be for the development of an advisory body?
Yeah, at this point, you know, you've had a lot of time to think about it and, you know, gone back and forth with city staff. And I'm just trying to get an idea where you are in terms of this committee.
Yeah. I think that with the adoption of the strategic plan, that would be one of the things that I would immediately begin is to explore what kind of, what kind of size of that advisory group and how it would fit within the plan. But otherwise, I haven't just further developed that.
Yeah, well, that makes sense because we haven't adopted it yet. The agreement with the county, that's not an MOU at this point, right? It was just a contractual agreement. So we'd have to reach out to them also to do an MOU. Is that what you're proposing?
Are you saying the agreement with County Parks for our OST program?
That's correct.
It is an agreement.
Yeah, but it's not an MOU. Well, okay, it's an MOU, okay, thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Bertrand. Any other questions from council members? Seeing none, we will bring this item to public comment. I'll turn it over to our moderator to let us know if there's any members of the public that have commented on this item, either via email or in person tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson. I do not see any attendees asking to comment on this item, and I do not see any emails.
Great, thank you. With that, we will close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion and a vote. Are there any comments by council members? And I see Vice Mayor Brooks has her hand up.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson. Thank you, Nikki, for the presentation. I'm really excited about the plan. I'm really excited about the programming that's going to come out of this plan. I appreciate the intentional effort to address equity in one of the goals, I think it was goal two or three. It's important that the program, that programming that's created within our Parks and Rec Department is created with that equity lens. I'd like to see that some of the members of the advisory board represent all community members, and that's going to be really important, at least for me, to see that. There was a mention of people of all abilities, but I'd love to see an expansion of that even further. Those are all my comments. And I'll go ahead and make a motion to pass the recommended action for this item. Thank you.
I'll second that motion, that motion.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Brooks and a second by Councilmember Bertrand. Councilmember Bertrand, did you have other comments? Or was your hand up just to second the motion?
Yeah, well, no, I second it because I wasn't expecting it to be. But I'll definitely second it. I have another question of Nikki, if I may. And what was the input from the Art and Cultural Committee? I don't recall that. I remember Sam brought it up because he's a member, but I don't know if that was actually reported. I was just curious.
Yeah, so I incorporated it into the plan that was submitted in the packet. And we discussed how the Recreation support of the staff member that assists Art and Culture for the production of the new bees at the beach and the music that would typically occur during the summer. And so that, as being one staff member who does a lot of events production and then recreation, also in addition moving to putting on events, between these two, the staff, there is a benefit within the city to have a pooling of resources there. And that in the event that suddenly Kelly wasn't available anymore, that the historical information would be held and have the ability to have a little bit more fluid on the staff side of the management of those events, as well as identifying areas for efficiency, such as volunteer recruitment and those kind of things. So that on the operational side, there would be a stronger support for both the events that Art and Culture puts on as well as, or a lot of the work that Recreation was doing.
Okay, thank you, Nikki, I appreciate that.
All right, any additional comments from council? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember Bertrand.
Madam City Clerk, if you're asking for the roll call vote, you're still on mute.
I'm so sorry, thank you, Mayor.
That's okay, that's all.
Councilmember Bertrand.
I agree.
Councilmember Botorff.
Aye.
Councilmember Story.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brooks.
Aye.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much for your work on this, Nikki. We're going to move on now to item eight B, which is the Village Ballard Project, and I'll turn it over to staff.
Good evening, Mayor Peterson and council. I shared my screen, just a raise of a hand if everyone can see that place. All right, perfect. Before you tonight is a, in the staff agenda report, and my very brief PowerPoint presentation, is the presentation of our Village Ballard Project and some specific details with regard to the grant funding that we acquired recently. The fiscal year 19 state homeland security grant project, and this project number 005, also known as a SHISCAP grant, if you're familiar with the state homeland security grants under that program. Specifically, the requirements under this grant that we apply for are improvements to our critical infrastructure security, protection from increased protection from all threats and hazards, enhanced community preparedness, the prevention of violent extremism. And you might recall that back in 19 and prior to, there were a good number of domestic and other terrorist events targeting outdoor venues and large-scale events. And so this grant specifically was, we were very much interested in applying for this grant so that we can improve our own safety related to our venues. And then lastly, inter-jurisdictional collaboration. A little bit of information about the application process. I'm assuming that most of you are familiar with it. It's quite lengthy, but I want to touch on a few things. As I mentioned, this is an FY19 SHISCAP grant, state of California. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry to interrupt, sir. If you're trying to advance your slides, they haven't been advancing.
Okay, I'm on the slide too, let me...
Yeah, we're still seeing the initial slide, unless that's just me, but I'm seeing slide one of 10.
What do you see now? Which one, slide two?
Still shows me slide one. If other council members are seeing additional slides, let me know. It might just be an issue on my end. But I think that we're still seeing just the first slide. Yeah, the first slide that says Village Ballard Project.
Yeah, it's paging through for me as I'm talking. Do you think, Matt, we're actually seeing your, the second screen with the big slide and the small slide at the same time? We're sharing, yeah. Okay, I minimize that.
I think you would want to...
Sorry, Katie?
Under display settings, on the notes pages, you'd click that down arrow and then click swap presentation and notes.
Display settings, okay.
Okay, so now we're seeing...
Rock presenter view in slideshow. Okay.
Didn't do anything.
Duplicates should work.
An alternative, Larry, do you think you could pull up his slide? His slide there in the shared drive?
Yes, I will do that.
Katie, I think if you put it on duplicate slideshow, it'll work. This is just, if 2020 were a slideshow, this is what it would be.
Are you controlling it now, Larry?
Larry, if you're trying to respond, you're still muted.
Thank you, sorry, I'm sharing right now. Do we see it? Is it, yeah, that's, if you go back to the first slide, Larry. There you go. One more. All right, now let me see if I can get back to him. Okay, Larry, go back, one more slide. All right, I apologize. Can you see Larry's slides now, mayor and council?
Yes, we can see it now.
All right. As I mentioned, the requirements under this FY19 state homeland security grant, SHISCAP grant, were several to include improvement to our critical infrastructure and security features, enhanced protection from all threats and hazards, community preparedness, efforts to prevent violent extremism. And as I mentioned, several years ago, there was an increase in violence related to outdoor venues such as ours. We didn't see any violence, of course, but there's always that concern. And then inter-jurisdictional collaboration, next slide, Larry. With regard to the application process, I just wanted to mention a few things. It's a lengthy process, they always are, the federal grants, homeland security type grants and state grants. And in November of 2018, a couple of years ago, staff made a presentation to the county office of emergency services, to their grants committee, that included Rosemary Anderson, the director of emergency services here in the county, Sherah Hart, and a couple of others on their committee. And we made a presentation related to our supervision here in Capitola related to large-scale special events that we host on an annual basis. We were happy to learn after that presentation that our proposal and request for grant lines was accepted by the local committee. And so that committee gave staff direction to submit our SHISCAP grant application to the state's office of emergency services. And we did that towards the end of 2018, excuse me. Several local submissions were part of that grant request that eventually went up to the state. As is often the case, it took quite a while to get results or approval from the state. In April of this year, California Office of Emergency Services approved the entire county, Santa Cruz County's homeland security grant application, which included our request for enhancements, strategic enhancements to our public venue here in the village in the amount of $40,526 for the city of Capitola. That grant period, by the way, is September 1st of 2019 through May 31st of 2021. So you can see that even though the request was made a couple of years ago, we're coming up on the end of the actual grant period in May of next year. This is a picture that probably most of you have seen before. And this is the Virginia Festival, the last one, in 2017. And I included this picture just for two reasons. Number one, and most importantly, this reminds us all of the attraction of our city and our village area to people from throughout the region and beyond as it relates to our hosted special events. This one being the largest that we've experienced, or certainly that I've experienced in my tenure here. And then secondarily, it does introduce, from a police department perspective, the challenges of properly managing crowd movement and managing security needs within a venue like this here in Capitola. Sorry, Larry, next slide. I'm sorry, go back to, there you go. Now, this is a little bit of a smaller event here. This is the car show. But it's also a large event, it attracts 10,000 to 15,000 people on a two-day weekend in June of every year. Of course, not this year, all events were canceled. But this is also an event that could potentially introduce some, does introduce some safety concerns as it relates to locking down the venue, closing down the village, the number of pedestrian and expensive vehicles within that area, and the need for the police department and the entire city to properly protect property and people. The next slide, Larry. And so when we talk about crowd management and safety, and as a reminder, specifically, we're talking about four events in Capitola that are the largest of all of the special events. That being, as I mentioned, the car show, which happens in June, followed by Wharf to Wharf at the end of July, the Art and Wine Festival at the end of September or mid-September, and then the Capitola Beach Festival. Those are the largest of our general special events. And those are the events, by the way, where we lock down the village for the duration or in the example of the car show, for the first day of the event. And so how do we, as a police department, ensure that we manage the crowd properly and that we maintain a high level of safety for all the participants? And I want to touch on a couple of things. You've heard me talk about this before. Each of these events requires an operational order or a contingency plan that is put together by someone on my staff, typically sergeant under the direction of Captain Dally. And then, of course, we coordinate with the event organizers early on in the event schedule to make sure that we are aware of their concerns, we're aware of their civilian staffing numbers, and we collaborate with regards to the need to provide a safe venue for everybody. And based upon those early meetings, we identify our proper, we, the police department, our proper staffing, needed numbers of personnel and our police posture or also known as our enforcement profile. Of course, there's a need for effective signage and significant social media presence in advance of the weekend of the events. And then the last three bullets are really... And then the last three bullets are really important to touch on a little bit because that is where this ballard project is specifically going to be advantageous and certainly benefit, I believe, the city, the community first, city and the police department. There's a need to identify traffic control points with each of these larger special events so that they can manage the ingress and the egress or the movement of people. There's also a need for the visible deterrents, efforts at visible deterrents, also known as target hardening. And historically in Capitola, you know what that looks like at the intersections that we're going to talk about in a minute. That's the placement, and thanks to Steve and his crew for the placement of the signage and the placement of the barriers. And then there's a need, historically, to support those barriers, barriers at those intersections with personnel or large number of personnel, for certainly for the Art and Wine Festival and for the Wharf to Wharf. And the visibility does create a level of deterrence that is advantageous, I believe. But what it does, it takes away from the ability to place a number of needed personnel on foot moving about the venue, which is also a significant deterrent. Next slide, Larry. And so with the Village Ballard Project, there are three intersections that we're all familiar with. When we close down the village in support of one of our special events, there's three critical infrastructures that are always needed to properly and safely close down the village and prevent open to pedestrians but not open to vehicles. And those intersections are Stockton and Esplanade up here, just on the other side of the Stockton Bridge, Capitola Avenue and Stockton. And then lastly, the third critical intersection, traffic control point is how we refer to that, is up there at Park Place and Park. This is the most difficult, by the way, traffic control point to manage for a couple of reasons. It's the widest street, it's usually the busiest street by traffic volume, usually because that's where the visitors typically are entering the venue. And it requires the largest number of personnel to properly maintain our barriers and the closure of the street at that location. You know that during the car show, on the second day, the Sunday, we open up the venue and we allow for traffic, local traffic or all vehicular traffic to pass through the venue. And so we open up this barrier here during the car show and we move it to San Jose in this location. And then we open up this barrier here and we move it down to the exit of the Esplanade so that we allow for passage of others not attending the event to come through our city and then back out Park Boulevard. That's an easy adjustment during the car show. In the future, it might be, I do predict that we're going to see that the Ballard Project is very effective for us, and it might be that we have plans in place in the future to erect the same systems. It wouldn't require the same number of poles. Steve, you and I talked about this, but consider the same type of system here and here in support of the car show. Next slide, Larry. When we were doing some research, myself and Captain Dally, with regard to considering application for this grant, we visited, we made contact first with the city of Vacaville and the Vacaville Police Department. And I was familiar with some of their rather large venues in their small downtown area. And that's the first time I was exposed to these ballards. And so I spoke to one of my contacts there, a captain, and asked about the utilization of the ballards, how long they had been using them, cost, et cetera. And we put ourselves in a good position to feel comfortable in making our request through initially the county and then eventually to the state that would be successful in seeking and being granted approval for this project as it relates to enhanced security and the need for something a little bit more effective and a little bit more deterrent than historical barriers that we've been using. And as I mentioned, I'm going to say again, it's really important for me to be able to free up some personnel and place them inside the venue on foot, engaging with the crowd, but also being more effective as eyes and ears as it relates to maintain a high level of security for these types of events. Next slide, Larry. And so what staff is asking for from council this evening is to adopt the proposed resolution accepting the California Governor's Office of Emergency Services grant funds for the FY nineteen state homeland security grant project, that number zero zero five, portable baller security barriers, and to amend the current FY twenty and twenty-one budget. And I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you so much, chief. I see council member Botshorf has his hand up.
Thank you, mayor. And thank you, chief, for that presentation. I'm not sure if you were, if you covered it when you were pointing because I wasn't able to follow your cursor on a couple of things, but I guess my question is, you know, the three places you've identified, I see, but do you have any concern about having ballards on El Camino Media or San Jose? And give me your thoughts on why those two streets aren't important.
They are important, first off. We do have staff that are assigned to Park Place and Park that also monitor the traffic on El Camino Media, and they've been able to do that effectively without placing additional persons or barriers at that location. We're not greatly concerned about that, but it is part of our contingency planning. And then if your second question, council member Botshorf, was related to San Jose, in, let's use Art and Wine as the example, where the village is closed down for the entire weekend, we effectively prevent any or eliminate concerns as it relates to San Jose because of the placement of the barriers at Cap Ave and Stockton, Stockton and Esplanade, and then, as mentioned, Park Place and Park. And so there's not a need, in our opinion, to place barriers. Am I correct in asking, council member, that you're talking about this location here?
Let me get anything by there. I'm talking about, it's the intersection of Cap Avenue and San Jose. I know it's a narrow street and it is one way, but I wasn't sure, you know, if we're trying to prevent anybody from driving a road vehicle into the area, they can still, you know, drive the wrong way in a one-way street and access that, but I don't, I was under the impression that we were trying to do this in a way that it wasn't necessary to use a lot of manpower to occupy the point. They would be pretty much standalone, but you can expand on that.
I will expand on that. We will be more able to use this system as a standalone system, significantly better as it relates to a visual deterrent, but there will still be a need to have personnel monitoring these intersections even when the ballards are in place. The number of personnel to monitor will be about half what we currently need when we have the intersections blocked with barricades, barricades and signage.
Great, thanks for that explanation. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Chief, if you could go back to that map again, Larry? So I'm, just to clarify, it looks like one of them says Park and Park Place, but it's on Monterey, so Park Place intersects, intersects with Monterey Avenue? So would these ballards be up at the Park intersection or would they be down on Monterey and Park Place?
They are actually, that's right, Rosemary Anderson, that's right, it's at Monterey and Park Place. It's just south of El Camino Media and right across from the, that bright blue, rather large condo complex right there on Monterey.
Yeah.
Right as, better explain maybe, right as you start climbing Monterey, vehicles climbing Monterey, that's where the barricades have been placed.
Okay, I see, I see. Okay, thank you. I believe council member Story and then council member Bertrand had questions.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Chief, I wanted to ask, when the ballards are not in use, will there be plates over the holes in the street or will those just be open holes? In the pictures, it's hard to tell, and so that was my question.
There are metal plates that are embedded in the street when the ballards are not in place. And Steve might be able to provide more specifics with regard to those plates, but in fact, the holes are covered by those plates, plates are removed when you place the ballards.
Okay, so they're like little manhole covers that go over to level out the street?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, excellent. Thank you.
All right, council member Bertrand, you had a question?
Yeah, similar to what Sam was talking about. So is it some way to lock the plates, the plates in place so that no one can remove them? Or some sort of, I just don't know, some kid or whatever comes by at night and takes them, that's what I was wondering about.
I believe that they're fairly secure in place, but, and I apologize, Steve, can I turn to you?
Yeah, chief, I'd be happy to take that. So they're like the water valves or small valve boxes you see in streets. They're metal, metal top that'll fit in there snuggling. You could remove, they tend to get wedged in and are difficult to remove rather quickly if they're on the sand. The ballards themselves will be locked in place when they're in place, but the caps will not be. But that's a great standard.
Okay, so thanks, Steve. My second question, chief, is, you know, still have people at the top of Monterey and Park?
At the, sorry, the top line?
Where the rail is, yeah. Where the rail crosses Monterey, that intersection there.
Yeah, we do provide traffic control points early on, especially at Art and Wine because of the volume of traffic, either people asking for specific directions, allowing people to get down into their homes on El Camino Media, so there will be personnel utilized up there as well.
Okay, thanks.
All right, any additional questions from council? Saying none, we will bring this item to public comment and I will turn it over to our moderator to let us know if there's any public comment on this item.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson. I do not see anyone attendees with their hands up and I do not see any emails.
All right, with that, we will close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion and a vote. Council member Botshorf has his hand up.
Yeah, I think this is, it's a good thing to protect us, to protect our citizens when we have events, and I think what it's going to do in the long term is free up the amount of people that you have to connect to each one of these intersections, which means they can be given other options. So with that, I think this is a good project, especially since we're able to secure a grant, that makes it even better. I'm going to make a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
I'll second, nope, Sam will second.
All right, we have a motion from council member Botshorf and a second from council member Story. Council member Bertrand, do you have additional comments?
Yeah, I have to remark that the rationale for the grant, what I was reading, it looked kind of scary, but I'm glad, chief, that you pursued it and working, I guess, with people in the county to get us on the list. Thank you very much for that opportunity to provide safety for us and, as Ed mentioned and you already reiterated, reducing our, what you would call personnel requirements. Does that mean we're going to have, just one other question, I guess, does that mean we're going to be able to reduce how many people are assigned to an event because of the ballards? Will it reduce our budget in that sense?
No, I don't believe so. It's going to allow me to more effectively and properly deploy the personnel that are needed to manage.
Got you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no additional comments, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, council member Bertrand.
I agree.
Council member Botshorf.
Hi.
Council member Story.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Brooks.
Hi.
Mayor Peterson.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, chief. Appreciate your work on this. We'll move now to our final item of the evening, item eight C, approve plan specification and engineer's estimate for the Capitola Avenue sidewalk improvement project and authorize advertising for bid. Turn it over to staff.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm in the process of sharing my screen. Give me a minute. I thought Ed was going to make the presentation.
Well, it's good, good evening, mayor and council. And before eight tonight is to approve the plan specification authorized to a bid on the Capitola Avenue sidewalk project. Just a quick background, two hundred thousand dollars was included in the twenty twenty capital improvement program budget to reconstruct the sidewalk along the north side of Capitola Avenue. This is a three hundred block of Capitola Avenue, including a new retaining wall. You can see in the picture here, this elevated sidewalk that goes past three, two businesses. There's some apartments up here and an apartment building here will be reconstructed and a retaining wall put in here. Benefits of the project include building compliant, ADA path of travel. Even though these sidewalks, I believe, were built in the very late nineteen nineties where there is the colored sidewalk, it is not ADA compliant. The controls that we had doing construction structure back then just didn't allow us to make sure that everything was being built. And to be honest, nobody was very experienced at it at that time. So both the cross slope going across the sidewalk and the running slope along it are not compliant with the current ADA regulation. So we'll be carrying out the sidewalk in tire length. And then this ramp at California and Capitola Avenue is not compliant and we will be replacing that with a new ramp as standard. One of the bigger benefits of this project is to the parking area along Capitola Avenue. The new retaining wall will allow, will level out the existing landscape and allow cars to open up their doors and get out on the passenger side. I'll back up a few slides here. You can see this landscape hill below the sidewalk and above the curb. That's this brown line on my fancy drawing here. So what that does is obviously that prevents the door from being able to swing open. What we are going to do is build this yellow retaining wall and then level out this area. What we are going to maintain is about a three-foot landscape area that will be landscaped by crews following construction of the project. Behind the curb, we are going to have a one-foot concrete extension. And you can see the picture on the right here shows what this extension does. This is a nine-inch extension at Trader Joe's, Brown and Shepherd Center. We're going to go a little wider, we're going to go with a one-foot extension. What that allows somebody to do is open their car, stand on a solid and wide enough surface to stand on, you know, get their stuff out of their car. You need their exit to the road or they could travel along this way. We didn't want to create two different sidewalks. We could, you know, conceivably you could build a sidewalk down here and have an upper level and a lower level. We ran into accessibility problems by building one on the lower level at both ends, but it's very difficult to get the two back to merge together. So we have gone with this. We are not creating a new path of travel, we are just creating an area that's better for the cars to get out of. Big part of this is coordination. We are working in some of reproperties whose main access to their buildings is Capitola Avenue and the sidewalk we will be replacing. That access will be blocked and a problem at times and certainly impacted. We sent a letter out to all the property owners and tenants. Staff met with two of the property owners and the restaurant owner and went over the projects and they said they would notify their tenants and they were all supportive of the project. Most tenants, especially at three twenty-eight Capitola Avenue, can access the properties from California Avenue. The restaurant can be accessed from California Avenue. So they are quite fine proceeding with the project. There are two apartments above the restaurant that can only access it off Capitola Avenue, but we will make sure there's temporary access available to them. It probably will change day to day depending on what the contractor is working on, but we will certainly maintain that they can get in and out of their units. Little details on the project, the engineer's estimate for the project is a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. The current construction budget is a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. As I stated in the report, the balance between the two hundred thousand dollar budget and our construction budget is about sixty-six thousand dollars, went into engineering and surveying on the project. We're proposing to open the bid after the holidays on January sixth of twenty twenty-one, and construction will certainly be depending on weather. It shouldn't take that long to actually construct the project. It'll be winter or spring of this year. So the recommendations at this point are to approve the plan specification and construction estimate for the sidewalk project and authorize the advertising for bids. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you so much, Steve. Steve, I have a quick question. You mentioned the access for the two apartment units that will need to use that sidewalk to get into their apartments, but for people coming from... But for people coming from the city hall parking lots, for example, walking into the village, will there be a sign to tell them to cross the street, or will they have to go into the road? Or how will people get from city parking lots down into the village when this is closed off or construction?
So we will put a sign at the crosswalk up by the fire station that says, "Crosswalk closed ahead, cross here," and get them to the other side. If they manage to get around that or come down Tan Mar, we'll put another sign by Tan Mar, but they will have to cross at some point. They probably will not have linear access through the project for most of it.
Makes sense. Thank you. I see two other council members have their hands up. I apologize, I don't, I'm not sure who had their hand up first, but in the order that I see it on the screen, we'll go to Councilmember Bertrand and then followed by Councilmember Councilmember Bertrand, you're still muted.
Sorry about that. So working with the property owners and some have, I guess, concrete walls, I guess, like the law office, are we going to replace your concrete wall, or do they do that themselves? How's that going to be handled?
So this is the wall you're talking about. They're actually, these two, the sidewalk and the wall were poured separately when they were built, and we are just going to take this out and then pour again right next to it at a different slope. So if everything goes well and the contractor takes care of this wall, it will not be damaged, and we will be able to pour right up next to it as part of that project. So we are not intending to take that wall out.
Okay, thank you. Great.
Councilmember Story?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Steve, and you may have answered some of my questions, but I was wondering whether the sidewalk is, will be wider after the project is done. I can see if you remove that little curb against the purple wall, that will create some additional width to the sidewalk. But otherwise, will the sidewalk be wider?
It's going to be about six inches wider. It's not going to be a significant change. The way it's going to work is actually in the concrete area, but we're going to move the fence to the outside edge of the, of the concrete. We are not making a big change in the, in the width of the sidewalk, though. Maybe six inches.
But it will be ADA compatible with that, you know, that width?
Yes, it will be.
Okay, yeah. Even six inches, I think every little bit.
Yeah, we ran into, you know, trying to balance between keeping the area down below so we could have some landscaping there and get car doors open and widening the sidewalk up above.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you.
Councilmember Bertrand, do you have another question? You're still muted, Councilmember Bertrand.
Steve, you brought up the fence that makes me wonder. So that fence was designed for a certain angle to follow the sidewalk. Is this going to be a problem when you build the new wall?
No, there's, the changes are inches only. And we've been in contact with the artists that built that, and it will certainly fit and continue to do what it's doing. So, yeah, we will remove it and store it and then bring it back when the project's done.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no further questions from council, we will bring this item to public comment. I'll turn it over to our moderator.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson. I do not see any public comment on this item, and I do not see any emails.
Okay. With that, we will close public comment and bring it back to council for comment and a vote. And I will turn it over to Councilmember Botorff, who has his hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this project, I think the council is well aware that this project is near and dear to me, and I appreciate that back in March when we did the budget, I believe it was unanimous approval for this project. I can't remember if Sam had to recuse himself because of proximity, but I want to thank the council for voting for this project. Even though, you know, I, this project was, you know, near and dear to me, nothing happens in this city unless these three people agree on it, and this was a good project. I also want to take a minute to really commend Steve and Keloche for putting this together. I think, I think it's kind of like a farewell present is what I'm taking it as, because I can get it done before I leave, and that does mean a lot to me. I just want to give a little history, you know, on, you know, on this project and a couple other in the village, so I got an opportunity. You know, this project was not something that I invented or created. You know, Steve will tell you that this project had been on their plans. I didn't move into town in Capitola in 2009, and they had already had drawings to do this prior to that. It just seemed that there was never the will or funding to make it happen. And the other project I want to try to draw alignment with is, in the village, there was a, at one time, there was a broken sewer in front of Paradise Restaurant, and the owner there was doing a project to replace the sewer, and it ended up involving quite a bit of sidewalk replacement. And I remember I walked over there when they were jackhammering all up, and I said, we had talked about widening the sidewalks in the village, and Steve actually said, well, you know, there's a village master plan where this was included. But, you know, somebody has to, you know, call the little red flag. And I remember I got into an argument with the owner of Paradise, who was a very good contributor to the city, but we stalled the project because we realized that was an opportunity from widening the sidewalks to what they were supposed to be in the master plan. And what you all see now is Steve actually got together with a lot of the merchants there, and they started a business, a city business partnership to share the cost of the sidewalks. And what we all have there now is brand-new wide sidewalks that run from Martin and Reed ville all the way to Veldes. And that's similar to what this project is. This is a project that, you know, I think I kept beating the drum for eight years, and it took all eight years to get there, but I think I'm going to give Steve and Keloche credit for making this happen. And again, the city council for supporting me when I beat the drum on this, because the main reason on this was is that I used to live across the street, and there was a couple that came out one night, and the woman, they had been drinking, and they actually fell over the, that sidewalk, onto the ground, but the woman had a baby in her arm, because there didn't used to be a wall, a rail there. And this dark and closure permission went to, you know, great lengths to put in that fabulous art piece of artwork, and unfortunately, we just drilled holes into our existing, you know, non-supporting, when you look at that picture wall. So for me, you know, for many years to come, as I walk by this project, I will have good memories about this council in 2020. And of all the bad things that have happened in 2020, I think we could all just take a little, you know, pat on the back and say, this is a good project. It will serve a lot of people that walk in and out of this town and provide a place to display that beautiful piece of artwork and some safety. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to approve staff recommendation. And again, big thanks to Steve and Keloche for making this happen.
I'll second this motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Botorff. We have a motion and a second. And Councilmember Story, it looks like you have additional comments.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to explain why I'm still here for this particular item. Because I do have an office at 314 Capitola Avenue, which is the law office right in front of the project. But the city attorney informed me that because I'm just there month to month, it's not considered as conflicting property interest, and that I could go and participate if I wanted to. And, you know, since I am in close proximity to this project, I see all the visitors and the residents that try to pass by on that sidewalk, you know, and as Ed mentioned, I think it is a critically important bottleneck for us, and this project will go toward, you know, I think fixing that as well as the parking. So I wanted to add that, and maybe just one little additional plug to encourage the city to continue to look to improve and expand the sidewalks, you know, from this point going, I think that would be north, toward the, our parking lot. And don't consider this, these improvements to be a finality, but a continuation of this effort and ultimately to where we expect everyone to park and then walk down to the village and the beach. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Story. Do you have any additional comments? Seeing none. Thank you to Councilmember Botorff for bringing this to our attention. Thank you to Steve and everyone else doing all the work on this. Very much appreciated. With that, we have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember Bertrand.
I agree.
Councilmember Botorff.
Aye.
Councilmember Story.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brooks.
Aye.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. With that, we've come to the end of tonight's agenda. As I said erroneously last time, this will be the last time that I close out one of our council meetings as mayor in what has been a very interesting and dare I say unprecedented year as mayor. So for the very last time, as the mayor leading the meeting, closing out the meeting, I will implore you all to please take care of yourselves and take care of each other, and we will see you in December for our last meeting of the year. And with that, meeting adjourned. Have a good night.